Okay, it's seven forty and we do have a quorum. Andy, if you'll read the statement of a bid meeting.
I understand clerk of the Board of Education, Winoka School District I-3 of Woods County, Oklahoma, do hereby certify that prior to December the fifteenth last calendar year, the date, time, place of this regularly scheduled meeting was filed in the office of the county clerk of Woods County, Oklahoma. If any change has been made to the date, time, place of this regularly scheduled meeting, proper notice and writing has been given to the county clerk as required by law no less than ten days prior to the implementation of said change. I also certify that at least twenty-four hours prior to the meeting excluding Saturdays, Sundays, and holidays, at the date, time, place of this agenda, place and agenda of this meeting was posted in prominent public view of the location of this meeting. Witness my hand and seal, this school district, the twenty-ninth day of June two thousand and fifteen.
George.
Here.
Olson. Layla.
Here.
Ferguson.
Here.
Six here. Have any visitors comment?
No visitors.
Opening of bids for the telescopic seating in the gymnasium.
We have one bid. I've got his bond, I've got, I've got his bid, I've got his non-inclusion affidavit, I've got our, what we put in our bid packet. His bid comes in, it's the only one we got, his bid comes in at a hundred ninety-one thousand three hundred seventy-one dollars. That's chairback seats, except on both ends, there's a set of bench seats on the end, so if you have band in there, whatever student section, you can have that. They don't have arms, these do have cloth seats. And Don and I, we went and looked at, at the exact seats that are bid in this packet right here, and they're, it's a nice, nice room.
Who was the bid from?
The bid is from, same guys at Intercow.
Intercow?
Yes. The salesman's out of Wichita, Kansas.
The, you say there's a bench on both ends, is that like both ends of each side?
No, no, just one end.
Of each side?
The east end on both sides just has a...
East end on both sides?
A set of benches.
Do they have rails in the aisles?
Yes, and they have cutouts on that side, they'll have some cutouts so that...
And a cabinet.
So, well, yeah, that, but also for the benches, they can still sit in the chairs, and the benches are right up against the chairs. You know what I'm talking about, so you got space between...
Are you talking about for your players?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so players can sit in the chairs, and then there's a cutout for the announcers or the clock keepers to sit and everything, so. It's a, it's a very, very nice system and setup, and it looks good.
Are they comfortable?
I took pictures. That's one of the seats, you can scroll either forward or back and it'll show more pictures.
And...
They're very nice.
And one of the things that we, I've listened to some problems about from some other seating like this, is how if somebody sits down, you feel your whole deal move, but these are...
They're not that way, they're all bolted in.
They're solid.
They're very solid.
How can you get it back? I don't have an apple.
Yeah, you scroll forward just a more.
It's an impressive system.
I was amazed.
So you can...
Because I'd seen like the ones at Ford Supply, and those just feel cheap, and these feel like they're bolted down.
And you can still fold them up and still use the whole floor?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
You do have to fold the first row manually, was that right?
Yeah.
And then everything else...
You fold the backs of the first row down and it just...
So this would be like the...
That's the bleacher, yeah. They still have back?
They still have a back on the bleacher part.
Yeah, but they're bleached.
See that? On the bench part.
And we've got the, this is quoted, you know, has the widest floor you can get, so you're not stuck in there sideways.
Right.
This is pretty comfortable, what America's got. You know what color they'll be?
I've got a book right here, I haven't looked at that, what, I mean, what their color options are, but...
Probably something like that, you know, stains.
Dark gray.
Or something like that.
Yeah, something dark.
That's what I was gonna say, the dark gray, that looks pretty good.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion, except for this. I'll second that.
Second, okay. Motion by Andy, second by Don, Rick Cuddy vote.
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Yes.
If y'all come up with a color, can I please say something, 'cause that, if you don't, then that leaves it up to Lori and I.
These are all seat back colors, right? The seat, the actual...
That's the cloth, you're looking at the cloth, right?
Yeah, the cloth.
Yeah.
And then can you do color on the plastic or on the... I wasn't sure if it was all black, all the framework may be black. It would be really cool to go with a gray and maroon, I would think.
Read that, but I think that's what that is right there, I think that's your...
Yeah, that's rail color. That would be cool.
That one might look sharp, but it shows staining.
Yeah, you might get stained in that. I like something like that with sherpa, maybe a gray on that frame.
Like something like that, or something like that.
The frame is all metal, so it's, it's all powder coated, so it won't show staining.
This is the frame, I thought you were saying this was the...
That's not the plastic seat, the plastic part of the seat?
I don't think so, because it says powder coated.
It says powder coated.
So it's gotta be metal.
It's the frame.
Gray like that. Or even a lighter gray, I guess, yeah.
Are you talking like this one or this one?
Yeah, the one first one.
This one? Don?
I like, I like any of those, I'm not...
So what part of the seat is actually the, are the backs the...
The back and...
The back and the seat?
Here's your color, okay, Don, look right here, is this the colors for the, like the back of the chairs and the bench? Oh. And I think he'll come, I think he'll be here, I think he'll come down, so I can make sure of that before I, I'll meet him somewhere and make sure I'm on the right.
So on the cloth, are we all good with the sherpa maroon?
I think you can do some pretty cool combinations there. Yeah, so you think this is the plastic here?
That's what it looks like.
This would be the metal?
Solid color sculpture seat modules.
And then this would be the metal, and then this would be the seat back. Yeah, see, it's got the backing on...
Both sides, the back and the seat.
And then the part that's black there would be the plastic.
Those colors.
Yeah, and then the frame would be like, well, I guess the metal going around it. Would be the powder coating, right? Yeah. They went, oh, like all that stuff.
Oh, yeah.
All the metal. Yeah.
Well, you might wanna do the...
Do that, a light gray, and then do the plastic or whatever.
Well, or even do that stuff in the black and do the, around the seats in the gray.
Yeah.
That one right there would be pretty cool, the shire, shire black cherry, did you see that one?
I don't think so.
It's kinda got a little bit of a mix of colors, but, of course, this one would be really cool.
Yeah, but it's got that light gray.
It's got so much light gray that it might show stains pretty good.
Think it would be great. Have y'all marked what you think right there, and then I'll, because he's supposed to come down, and if he got the bid, he was gonna come down, and I'll make sure I'm on the right page with him, on what we're actually picking colors for.
I think we were kinda thinking the framework's black, the plastic with a gray...
With a gray.
And the seat backs with a maroon.
Yeah.
This is black.
No, that'd be the...
That would be...
Yeah.
Yes, that would be black.
If we don't keep the food out of the gymnasium, that Burgundy's even gonna show stuff, though. Look at our blue chairs, some of those chairs out there, where people have said an eight on them and stuff like that, they've got stains on them. Well, I mean, even black's gonna show, I mean, even if you had a black, I mean, depending on what you had.
Yeah, nachos.
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, and that's...
I don't want to have to keep the food out of there.
And this, and this one?
I don't want to have to keep the food out of there.
Well, and it's got, it's got to the point where only the people that follow rules keep it out.
Which one it needs, did you say, on the, on the plastic parts of the seat?
The gray one.
This is number ten?
No, we said...
Yeah. But that cherry one, she was talking about, that, I don't think that would show a lot of stuff.
Because it's broken up?
Because it's got more of a...
Pattern to it.
Pattern to it.
Oh, yes.
And that would go with the gray and the, the black. You're gonna have one.
That one is the best.
You're gonna have, it's the best, but is it gonna show, though?
Yeah, probably.
What about that one down there? That one? Too much blue. Oh, is that blue? I can tell, I mean, it looks like it. Yeah, reminds me of cherries with colors. What do you guys think? I like that one, I just don't, you think it's still gonna look okay with gray?
I don't know, it may look better as a whole piece. It's got maroon in it.
Yeah.
And it's got black in it. I would think it would look good with what we put together.
Yeah. I'm kinda like Lori, I think something that you broke up is gonna show less stain than one color.
I do like this better, but I don't want it to look crappy after a year, so I'll do...
Whatever suits you, this tickles me upon the death.
Okay. I mean, my child blood, anything like that, I mean, you know what I'm saying? It's gonna happen if people are in areas, so.
Shire black cherry. That's a good looking, that's a good looking seed.
Yeah, I like that, too, I think.
But I'll, you know, like I said, he told me he would come down, so when he does, I'll make sure that's gonna go together, and then I'll come find you guys if it's...
Do you have a delivery time on that?
Yeah, there's, well, it takes sixty, eighty days to build them, but they're supposed to be in by the middle of November, November fifteenth, they're supposed to be in, so that's before the first year, I guess. And they'll take, they'll take all the seats out, it's in the bid, they'll take all the old ones out, they'll leave the wood here, but they'll take the metal, and that's part of the bid. So, they'll stack them, they'll stack the wood somewhere where...
We'll probably have to get an electrician in here.
Yeah, yeah, we'll add electricity, yes.
Okay, moving on, if everybody's good there. Number seven, all of the following items will be approved by one vote unless any board member desires to have a separate vote on any or all of these items, consent agenda, consistent discussion, consideration of the rule of the following items as listed. You wanna go ahead and give your financial opinion?
Yeah, just a couple of things. Checked with the county assessor and our... Ad velorem should be about the same, the valuation is, and she doesn't have all of the public service in, and she won't have it in till the end of July, but right now, but it's, it's down thirty-five thousand five hundred and eighteen dollars out of the, you know, out of a fifty-six million dollar valuation, so. Should be, should be right at, right at that. Gross production, you know, like I, like I told you last month, it's, but, you know, the valuation stays like it is, we'll be okay as far as, you know, even, the last couple of months, our gross production has been down, but it was still higher in May two thousand fifteen than it was in May two thousand fourteen, and it was higher in June two thousand fifteen than it was in June of two thousand fourteen, so, you know, it's, it's half less than it was in November, December, January, but it's still higher than it was. At that rate, you're still talking about five hundred thousand dollars gross production, even if it stays what it, what it's been doing the last couple of months for next year, so, that's a positive. I really, that's, that's a big thing, just making sure our valuation wasn't going down because of, you know, how the whole business has been going, but our fifteen sixteen, or, yeah, our fifteen sixteen valuation should be within a ballpark of last year, so. Good shape there.
I'll move, we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Second.
Don, take it.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Three seventeen.
Oh, okay. Well, now we, wait, what I need to do on that?
Need to make a recommendation, say, for P.O. three seventeen, for that amount.
Okay. That's back, that's, I made a mistake. I need... Someone to make... Make a motion to, or P.O. number seventeen, in the amount of a hundred ninety-one thousand three hundred and seventy-one dollars.
Three seventeen. Three seventeen?
Mm-hmm.
Is that for the seat? Yes, ma'am. Oh, that's what it is?
I wrote three seventy-one.
I wrote three seventy-one.
A hundred ninety-one thousand three hundred and seventy-one dollars. I'll make a motion.
Oh, P.O. number three seventeen, okay.
P.O. three seventeen.
I'll shake off the motion.
Well, what, if you've got it in here, do we need to change that, or what? You've already got it on the consent agenda, right? That's just what the accountant told me to, I mean, yes, ma'am, but he just told me to make sure it was done like that, is what they told me, so. Make sure it's done as a separate vote? He, they just told me to go ahead and just have you guys make, I mean, have him make the recommendation.
Make a motion that, because it wasn't listed, we didn't know what it was gonna be till we got there.
I didn't give it to you on the list, because I didn't know who bought it. Okay, we didn't know the amount, okay. Yes.
We had it, we had it in the paperwork as we were gonna take bids, but we didn't have an amount.
Okay, all right, so do we wanna amend our motion to approve the consent agenda with adding...
Let's do that, let's do that.
Don, would you like to amend your motion?
I made the motion.
Or...
I'll move, we approve the consent agenda with the addition of P.O. three seventeen in the amount of the bid.
Give a second.
Second.
Okay. Don, take it.
Yes.
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 Okay, other report, superintendent.
All right, I've got Alvin Limited coming tomorrow, we've got several, that's the plumber. You know, we've had the last two stock shows, we, we've worked on, but we haven't got fixed a problem out there with the bathrooms clogging up, so I'm gonna have him go in there, he probably had to cut out some cement floor and put a clean out, or maybe redo the bathroom plumbing, but it's gotta be done, because last time it stopped up before the stock show even started, just a few kids out there, so that's, it's not fixed. We've got a leak at the Rindhouse that he's gonna look at, and there's a, some, you know, periodically water will come up right out here behind our meter, you know, it was up yesterday, there was water standing, today there's not water standing, so we don't, you know, he's gonna have to look at that, and then some problems with the automatic sprinklers at the softball field, so he's supposed to be here at one, and I'm gonna get him set up to take care of several of those problems sometime in July. Carpet is supposed to start tomorrow, we've, we've got some guys coming in to repair the sidewalks and replace the sidewalks out here in front, they were supposed to start this weekend and didn't start, so he told me they'd start into this week or next weekend, but, you know, that, that should be, that should be done. I talked to you about talking to the county assessor and making sure our valuation was, you know, basically the same as it's been, and, you know, if public service comes up, I'm not sure, I don't think that, I, I know that the lines weren't on last year's, and I don't know if they're gonna be on this year's, but if those lines are on, then public service should really actually be up, but she said she wouldn't get public service till into July. Like I said, we've got the carpet, we've got all, you know, the, the painting really done, they'll, they'll start on the carpet tomorrow. We looked at lockers, and I didn't order them, it's gonna be fifteen, seventeen weeks out, no matter what, so we couldn't get them in this summer, even if we, if we did order them, I'll still look at them, you know, later on down the road and see if that's something, because, you know, we've, we've started to have problems with some of them that won't lock, won't open, that kinda thing, but, you know, I've got some, I've got some places that have lockers, it just, no matter who you order them from, they actually get them from two places, so two places make the lockers, no matter who you buy them from, so that's what the deal is, it's why it's such a, there used to be three, and then one went out of business, so all of his business went to the two, and that's why it ran into a deal. And they do have plastic lockers, which are, a lot of the new construction, this is what salesman told me, a lot of the new construction, people are putting plastic lockers in, you know, you can't mark them up, can't scratch them, they don't bang, they've got a fifteen year warranty on them, so, you know, when you first said plastic lockers, I'm thinking of something kinda cheap, they're not cheap, they're more than the steel lockers, but, you know, we'll, we'll look at that a little more. But Oklahoma City and Edmonds supposed to be buying them right now, anything that they build new, so if it gets down to that, I may go just look at them a little bit and see, see what that is, but that's all I've got, unless anybody has any questions.
Principal's report?
Still in search for, for basketball coach. Talked to a few people, I could hire somebody, but I'm just not willing to hire anybody, so, it's gonna take a while.
We thought we might have that deal covered today, but it didn't work, we'd have been in good shape if it would've worked, yeah.
Okay. Number nine, is that all you had, Mr. Murley?
Yep.
Vote to approve or not to approve to designate Lauren Tackett for two thousand fifteen, sixteen school year as the following, the one, two, three, and four. Purchasing agent, personnel, receiving agent, authorized representative for all favorable programs, and representative for child nutrition school lunch program. You have a motion?
I'll move.
Andy, how you vote?
Yes.
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 Number ten, vote to approve or not to approve to designate...
I'll move.
Okay.
Second.
Vote yes.
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Okay, number eleven, vote to approve or not to approve to designate Gal Nicholson to serve school.
Second.
Rick Cuddy vote?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, number twelve, vote to approve or not to approve to designate Lauren Tackett and Gal Nicholson, sign all checks for school lunch fund for two thousand fifteen, sixteen school year.
I'll make a motion to approve, second.
Don, take it.
Yes.
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 Vote to approve or not to approve to designate the activity fund to Stony and authority to transfer assets in the activity account when there's actual exchange, as long as there's no movement, money without recovery for fifteen, sixteen school year.
I'll move.
Second.
Andy?
Yes.
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 Fourteen, vote to approve or not to approve the recommended expenditures from activity accounts for fifteen, sixteen school year, these all the same as they were? Mr. Tackett?
Yes.
I'll make a motion.
Give a second.
Second.
Andy?
Yes.
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 Vote to approve or not to approve following fundraiser request for fifteen, sixteen school year.
I have one from the Winoka Cheerleaders, we will have a tee-shirt fundraiser during enrollment at the beginning of the year, estimated income a thousand dollars, money be used for uniforms, sponsor signature lists.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Give a second.
Second.
Vote yes?
Yes.
Vote to approve or not to approve to adopt an investment resolution with Woods County Treasurer concerning surplus funds for fifteen, sixteen school year.
I'll move.
Second.
Rick Cuddy vote?
Yes.
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 Okay, can you, I need the president and clerk to sign, I had to give that to Lori for you.
Yeah, looks like it. Thank you. Are they working on your air conditioner, or are you just...
No, it just went out today.
Okay.
And we, we called.
Just wanted to make sure, we were making sure the meeting, meeting was going quicker, because even I'm hot. Okay, seventeen, vote to approve or not to approve the lease on the schoolhouse to Michael Meriwether from July one, two thousand fifteen, June thirty of two thousand sixteen.
I'll make a motion to approve. Second.
Uh, Dawn, how do you vote?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
I need president and clerk to sign it, please.
Eighteen, vote to approve or not to approve the lease of the old shop building to Chuck Ten from July first, two thousand fifteen, July thirty, two thousand sixteen.
See if you wanna lease it?
We haven't had any issues with the building. He's keeping it mowed and all that.
Yes, yes, yes. He does keep it cleaned up.
I'll move, we approve the lease.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Uh, Andy Caddo, vote?
Yes.
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 Vote to approve or not to approve the fifteen, sixteen student parent handbook. I think there's a copy of any changes in here.
Okay, did, did you have a copy of changes? Yeah, on the, uh, on the Career Tech, the, what it, what it said was the Career Tech kids had to come in at seven thirty for zero hour, but last year, starting last year, Votec starts thirty minutes earlier, so those kids actually leave school before seven thirty. Here, go into Votec, so they can't do zero hours, so we just took that out.
Any other questions on the handbook? Do you have a motion?
I'll move, we approve changes.
Second.
Uh, I vote yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Vote to approve or not to approve the Winoka Public School Technology Plan for fifteen, sixteen school year.
And probably the only thing that they changed is, is some totals on the technology budget for two thousand fifteen through eighteen. I'll make a motion to approve.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Uh, Rick Caddo?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes. Vote to approve or not to approve the continued service agreement with Oklahoma Public School Unemployment Compensation Trust Account and Oklahoma State School Boards Association for two thousand fifteen, sixteen.
I'll move.
Second.
Dawn, can you vote?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Can you, can you sign this, please?
Vote to approve or not to approve membership renewal with Boris for the two thousand fifteen, sixteen school year. Is that membership still the same amount?
It's a, it's a hit five hundred dollars.
Do you have a motion?
I'll move.
Second.
Second.
Uh, Andy, how do you vote?
Yes.
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 Vote to approve the membership renewal with Northwest Oklahoma School officials for fifteen, sixteen school year.
I'll move.
For the second?
Second.
I'll vote yes.
Yes.
Do you have that on the list?
I think there was. Uh, no, there wasn't anything to sign. It's just a little voice, yeah.
Just a letter.
Okay, twenty-four, consider impossible action to approve the provided list of items as surplus and designated items for disposal.
And this is all cheerleading things that they went through. Did, did you have that in your packet? There's thirty-six cheerleading suits, four with my, four with my pants on me, and two sets of pom poms.
Okay.
I'll make a motion.
For the second?
Second.
Rick Caddo, vote?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes. Proposed executive session to discuss following personnel decisions in compliance with twenty-four, five, O S three oh seven B one. Do you have a motion to go into executive session?
I'll move.
Second.
Uh, Dawn, can you vote?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
I need Mr. Meriwether to stay in here.
Eight oh six P M.
Okay, you'll.